I just want to call Commissioner Ray Johnson to have our invocation and pledge to our flag. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. So will we make the best decision for this county? Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Ray was waiting for the national after my appointment. Oh, my. Good morning, everybody. It's a beautiful day in Green County. Fellow commissioners on our agenda today, we'd like to add item number C-10, which is a budget amendment for water and sewer. Item C-10 goes into consent agenda under a budget amendment for water and sewer. And also, I'd like to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege. Excuse me. There's a lot of pollen. So after the commissioner reports the recommendations, we will go into closed session for attorney-client privilege before we adjourn. Is there any other need for any change to the consent agenda? Or, excuse me, the approval of the agenda with those two?
All the changes made, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda with those two additions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried. For the consent agenda with that one modification, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, the consent agenda, number two, March 6th, regular meeting meetings right at the last where it's got commission report recommendations. I stated at current issue of our state magazine on the front cover was a picture taken by a young man from Green County.
Yes.
Not the pictures in Green County.
Right. Exactly.
All right. That correction, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second in further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously. Do we have any more for public comments?
No, sir.
Will we go into the presentations? Ms. Lee Anne.
Why don't you say the last name, you could pronounce it too.
There's too many vowels in that name and too many syllables. Would you please start your night?
My name is Lee Anne Bogasala. I'm an audit director at Walden Jenkins. This is our first year representing the county and performing their audit for the fiscal year 2022.
Well, this should work. You're in trouble, Kyle.
Oh, there it goes.
I'll just try. You just tell me. I mean, not.
All right. So like I said, I'm going to be presenting the fiscal year 2022 audit results. And just to give you an idea of what my presentation will include, I am going to go through who the engagement team is. So you have an idea of who is performing your audit and our level of expertise. And then I'm going to go through the four audit opinions. You have an audit opinion that's at the front of your financial statements. I'll kind of highlight some financial information there. And you have three compliance reports that I'll go through. There's also some required communication that we are required to communicate to the commissioners that is included in the PowerPoint. I'll kind of highlight some of the important parts of that. And then also go through, give you an idea of some of the GASB's that are coming up that need to be reviewed by management. And there is one that needs to be implemented for fiscal year 2023. And at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to go ahead and ask me those during the presentation. So this slide right here just depicts who Walden Jenkins is. We have over 100 years of experience. We serve over 650 government clients. We actually are in six states now. We opened up a Raleigh, North Carolina office at the end of fiscal year 2022. So that hasn't been updated on the slide. But we now have 14 offices to serve local governments. And your engagement team this year, Tim Loin, served as your engagement partner. He is the head partner of the North Carolina and South Carolina practice. And then James Betts is a quality review controller. He has a lot of experience in North Carolina. He actually resides in the Tennessee office. I served as your engagement director. I have the power to sign your opinions. But as a first-year audit, what we typically do is we have very high-level team reviewing for the first year, kind of combing through everything ourselves. Next year, I'll serve as your engagement partner. So the first opinion you had in your financial statements, just kind of give you an overview of what that opinion is before I tell you your results. That opinion is where we consider internal control structures. At the county, for purposes of expressing an opinion on the basic financial statements, that opinion does not provide an opinion on the effectiveness of the county's internal controls. Our audit wasn't performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards of the United States of America and government auditing standards. Our objective is to provide reasonable assurance, but not absolute assurance on the basic financial statements and that the fact that they are free of material misstatements. But ultimately, the financial statements are the responsibility of county management. So for your audit opinion in the beginning of your financial statements, over the financial statements, you receive an unmodified or a clean opinion on those statements. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And just so that you are aware, our responsibility doesn't extend beyond the report that we issued. We also did not audit the county's ABC board. That's audited by another auditor. They did receive an unmodified or a clean opinion. So we mention that in our opinion. Just don't hold us responsible for the ABC board. It's basically what that says. So just to kind of give you some highlights from the financial statements, I know that we are well into fiscal year 2023. But I did want you to know that the net position of the county is about $51 million. And of that net position, there was an increase this past year of $6.2 million that you added to the county's net position. $4.5 million, that came from the general fund. And if you want to kind of look at that in terms of where you are in the general fund compared to last year, last year you only added 1.6 million of fund balance. So in the fiscal year 2022, there was big increases to fund balance. In the financial statements, you can kind of see a comparative for the budget for the general fund. And I do have that with me here. One of the biggest reasons why you increased your fund balance for the general fund is because when you did your budget process for the general fund, you originally had budgeted about $21 million in revenue for the general fund, but you actually came out with $23.3 million. So you had additional revenue in the current year, more than budgeted. And then from expenditures perspective, you originally budgeted $20.5 million in expenditures and came out to $17.8. So there was a lot of expenditure savings in the current year. When you look at fund balance, the unassigned fund balance for the general fund, it's $11.3 million, which represents about 64% of the general fund expenditures. If you compare that to last year, the unassigned fund balance for the general fund was only 7.1, and that was 38 or almost 39% of the general fund expenditures. So there was a significant increase in fund balance this year. And, you know, just kind of looking at the county's perspective in whole, you're in a very good financial position from your unassigned fund balance perspective. Okay. Okay. So the next three opinions you have are your compliance reports. The first opinion is what we call a yellow book opinion. That's over our government auditing standards. That opinion, you receive an unmodified opinion. That is where we test the county's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulation. That report isn't intended to opine on the internal controls, nor is it intended to provide a legal determination of the county's compliance. What we do is we review different laws and regulations, and if we find something, then we let you know, which we will go through any findings a little bit later in the presentation. And then from a compliance report perspective, we perform a single audit. That is an audit of your grants. We tested five major programs. Two of those were federal, and three of those were state programs. The federal programs that we audited this year were Medicaid and ARPA. From a state's perspective, we audited the public cap fund, which is your lottery proceeds. We also audited the state capital and infrastructure fund, which you usually hear as SIF. And we also audited the emergency telephone system. There's actually a lot of grant testing that went on this year compared to the prior years. You received two opinions from that testing. One is over federal programs, and one is over state programs. And both of those, you received unmodified opinion or clean opinion. There were no findings for federal or state programs, which is amazing. That's very good job. So just to go through some of the required communication, I'm going to highlight some of the big items on here, but you do have to read each one. From a significant accounting policy, all the policies that management have appear reasonable and appropriate with accounting standards. All of those are disclosed in note one of the basic financial statements. The county did implement Government Auditing Standards Board Statement 87 in fiscal year 2022, which is related to leases. And that actually did not cause the county to have a restatement. But going forward, you will see additional lines on the financial statements related to a lease liability and a right-to-use asset. Management estimates are also included in the financial statements or disclosed in the financial statements. To our knowledge, we didn't have any issues with the estimates that management has. And some of those estimates that they have are actually based on actuarial assumptions. So we test those actual assumptions. From a relationship standpoint, we had full cooperation from county's management. There were no disagreements. As part of the audit, management does have to sign what's called a management ref letter. And that was signed by us. Basically, that says that management agrees with accuracy of the information provided and including the financial statements, and that it's completed accurate. To our knowledge, management did not consult with any other accountants. Now, you do have a third party that does help. They do help write the financial statements. They do help with some of the closeout of fiscal year. That wasn't considered a consult, that they were hired to help. And we worked directly with that third party as part of the audit. There were no significant issues discussed with management about business condition plans or strategies that would result in material weakness or risk of material misstatement on the financial statements. There were a couple audit adjustments. So when we received your financial statements and we received your trial balances, we did have a couple adjustments to that. Those were made as part of management. We have two that were not made. And the reason that these were not made was because they're not material. They're small in terms of your county, so we didn't require those to be made. There is one past audit adjustment related to a prior period adjustment for the county overstating compensated absences. And that was $40,000. And when you consider that, you consider that at the financial statements of the county, it's very small. So that was not adjusted by management. But management did change the way that they calculate compensated absences going forward. So they will have no issue with that going forward. And there was a piece of EMS revenue that should have been, it's included in revenue, but it should have included a deferred revenue, which means it's not earned yet. That was $130,000, which we didn't require management to post that one either. As far as your disclosures, there are a lot of disclosures in the financial statements. There's about 30-plus pages of footnotes for you to review. But I did highlight some of the significant ones. And just to give you additional clarification, we are independent of the county. We have to be independent as part of our audit procedures. So this slide right here goes through one of the findings that we had as part of our audit. Now, this slide, I apologize, did not get updated for the, for one piece, which I have all the information up here and I can explain that to you. This finding right here is included in your yellow book opinion in the back of the financial statements. It is considered a material weakness for the county. A material weakness is basically an adjustment that had to be made that is considered material to us. So every single fund that we audit, we have a separate materiality that is calculated as part of our audit procedures. And there are two items that we require an adjustment to be made. So I will kind of go through those. The first one is, there was a material adjustment for about $456,000 to the beginning equity of the general fund due to an understatement in the recording of the September 2021 sales tax distribution. So just to say that in layman's terms, when you're recording sales tax, the county has always included 12 months of sales tax in the year. But what they have included is June through May. What we did as auditors coming in is we realized that they were recording June through May, and we wanted to align that with the fiscal year. So the restatement that we did makes sure that management was recording revenue from July through June. So that is what the restatement is. We just aligned the recording of sales tax with the fiscal year. And going forward, that will be fixed. And that did result in, so if we fixed last year, we had to fix this year. So that caused an additional entry of $531,000 to record the sales tax from September 2022 in the current fiscal year. So September, you would think, oh, that's really late. But September, the money that's coming in in September is actually related to June. It's several months behind. So basically, GASB 33 states that the assets and revenue derived from tax revenue should be recorded when the underlying exchange transaction occur. That's the sale. So the sales occurred in June, so you have to wait to September to get it back into the right fiscal year. So we fixed that going forward. Management's aware of that, and they'll continue to fix that going forward. The other one that's not on your slide, this is because it was a late entry that we found as part of our audit process. There was an understatement and a liability for closure and post-closure of the landfill cost. That adjustment was a restatement of $1,086,584 to correct the beginning equity of the landfill fund. So you have a landfill out there, and you have a liability on your books of how much it costs to close it and going after that, what's called post-closure. That liability is determined by a third party. When your third party did that calculation, they forgot to include a state requirement liability. So the state of North Carolina has what's called a PACA liability that you have to add on to that liability. Your third party never included that in the calculation. So it has not been calculated correctly. So based on our experience with other entities, we knew that that needed to be added for North Carolina liability. So we adjusted management's calculation for that, and they'll use that going forward. So you should have no issues with that liability. Does anyone have any questions on those? It's been fixed. That's, I mean, that's the good part. Some of these things, you know, it's just, you know, going forward, you know, the calculations will be fixed. So.
Can you repeat what you just said?
Sure.
Not fixed, but the one before that. What did we miss out on? Or what were we trying to calculate or did not do?
So for the landfill?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So for the landfill, do you have a third party that goes in and they go out to your landfill and they calculate how much is it going to cost to close down the landfill appropriately and also care for it after the fact? That's called a closure and post-closure liability. That calculation that that third party did, did not include a state requirement. It's an additional liability in North Carolina that's required. It's over $2 million. And every year, that gets adjusted for inflation. Well, your third party never included it in the report. So management didn't realize, oh, I need to include this too. And so, because what management does is they just take the report from a third party that says, oh, this is what it should be, and they take that for its value because they're specialists. Well, your specialist forgot to include something that needed to be in there. So we added that as part of our procedures. We reviewed those third parties and make sure the estimates are correct. And we realized it was missing, so we asked them to add it this year. And that caused your restatement.
Thank you.
So this should be a one-time finding.
It is.
These two minor irregularities should not occur again.
Correct. Correct. And we actually gave management the calculation for the landfill. Like we took the actuary's opinion, added it to a spreadsheet, put inflation factors on there, taught them how to do it going forward, said you should have no problems whatsoever with that. And management, as part of your, as part of issuing the financial statements, management has to agree to those findings and say that they have a place and plan to correct it going forward, and they do. So that will be good going forward. The only other slides I have up here is just to let you know that we do have a government advisory service practice. We can help with different strategies, transformation, performance, management-type things. If there's any projects that the county wants to take on, some of these we can do and maintain independence, and some of them we can't do. But if there is any extra services that, you know, the county wants, we can either help or direct you to someone that can help you. So the next slide is new accounting pronouncements. I mentioned that there is one accounting pronouncement. It's GASB 96 that the county has to implement this current year. That's related to what they call SEVITAS. That's your subscription-based information technology arrangements. Very similar to the GASB 87 they just implemented. So we'll be working with management to make sure they properly implement that standard. And then you have a couple other ones that are coming up a little bit later. But we'll talk through those with management as they come up. And then there are a couple GASB projects that are out there, just for your information. Of course, more changes and more requirements for management to follow coming up. So there's constantly going to be pressure on finance to look at these new GASB's that are coming out. And some of this, yes, is going to cause additional work. But just so that you're aware, that there are some things coming down the pipeline. Okay. And then just as additional service for all clients that we have, we do offer what's called continuing education for those folks that need that. We offer that quarterly, on a quarterly basis. That's just the extra service that we add to our clients. And I believe everybody that needs to be has been added to this list. They'll get those emails for additional training if they need it. That's just the added value so that the county doesn't have to pay for CPEs. Does anybody have any questions?
Scared to ask.
Next question. Why were we late to audit? I mean, when did the county give you the information?
So our plan, so when we started the audit, we have a planning meeting to kind of discuss the timeline of when we're going to do the work. And that plan that was put in place was to ensure that the county met their deadline of December 1st. We did a lot of the testing upfront during the summer, as much like single audit testing that we could do. And then during our field work month that we had scheduled in October, we did as much testing that we could do. Some of the balances weren't finalized, and the county hires a third-party auditor to write the financial statements. Those were due to us at the beginning of October, and we did not receive them to February 1st. And then there was about, there were several versions of that that we had to continuously go through and update and change. And so that led to, you know, that led to part of the audit being late. And then also, when the original audit was scheduled in October and we couldn't meet that deadline because we didn't have what we needed, we had to move the audit until a non-busy time for us. Because we have, the way that we schedule audits, they're lined up, you know. And so when you don't meet your deadlines, we kind of have to push you to the back of the line a little bit. So we have already talked to the third-party auditor, or, sorry, third-party firm that writes the financial statements, and we have process improvements in place for next year so that this does not happen. And we'll be working again with management to create a plan that realistically, you know, has realistic deadlines to get that done timely.
So why were you not anything to directly contribute to the county?
Now, I do think you had some turnover in your department, but that is why you had the third party in place, to kind of help with some of that stuff. And I think that you have very capable finance director now that can get through a lot of that stuff. I've been talking with her a lot about the plan for next year. And, you know, some of it has to do with turnover in the finance department. Some of it has to do with the third party, and some of it has to do with us, you know, timeline where, you know, we had other audits that we were completing since the original timeline didn't work. So it was a combination of all three of us.
We all have other audits that are late, like I was.
We have one other audit that hasn't issued yet, and that has to do with the same third party that did not complete the financial statements yet. But we like to be done by December 1st. That is the extended deadline of the LGC, and that, you know, nobody wants an audit to drag on because we're already talking about fiscal year 2023 audit now. So nobody wants it to extend at all. And I just think that there needs to be some process improvements that we discuss to make sure this doesn't happen again, because this is not what we want. We want to be continuing to do audit into March.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the audit financial statements as presented.
Have a motion and a second in further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries four to one, one nay. Thank you, Ms. Bogasala. Was it close?
Yes, it was.
When you get past one syllable, I'm in trouble, okay? Okay. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to thank Wald Jenkins. Thank you, Lee Anne. It was a little bit of a laborious process with, you know, some transition. But they were very professional to work with, and we look forward to working with them going forward.
The most important thing is the quality of what came out of the audit.
That's right.
The outcome. Yeah. It's very good news for the county. We're very healthy. I don't know. Not a lot to complain about.
True.
Okay. My first item for action today is an approval of a partnership between Green County and the Arts and Historical Society, also known as the museum. Charters of Freedom, if you recall, has the monuments of, four monuments, and we were looking for a location to place them. We searched county properties, and what we found was that there is a natural fit for those at the museum. So we engaged Mr. Mueborn, Mr. Mueborn, and we talked about an agreement to place them there for the communities to see and look at. And what you have is an agreement that is between the two of us to place those there. Who's funding, who's taken care of, et cetera. And Mr. Mueborn has been very cooperative through this process. I actually think he's excited, or as excited as we are, to attain these. And there's a small timeline. I think fall of 2023 is when installation is going to be complete. Does that sound right? Are there questions on this agreement?
I'd like to say that this opportunity came to us for several years, and we've been looking at it bad.
Yep.
We've been talking about it every time we go to a conference.
Yep.
Thought that given the opportunity, he would be glad to come to Green County.
Yes.
Put this historic site in Green County. So thank you, Mr. Mueborn.
I think we've talked to him at the last two county commissioner conferences, annual conferences.
Move to approve the agreement, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second in further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item for action today is a memorandum of understanding recovery together. This is an MOU between Lenore and Green Counties. This is going to be the use of our opioid settlement funds. We have met with Lenore County Manager, Chairman and I met with Lenore County Manager and chairperson, and discussed some of the details with Judge Elizabeth Heath. And we think it best for our partnership, if we form a nonprofit, a nonprofit, to head this up, the details of which are attached. I hope you've had an opportunity to review. And this partnership will primarily be for an ARC and FARC court, Family Accountability Recovery Court, and Adult Accountability Recovery Court. And it will meet the need or the requirements of the opioid settlement funds to be spent in compliance with our auditor who has left. But anyways, are there questions about the agreement or of the understanding?
It's a good deal. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second in further discussion? I think it is a very good deal. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried.
Mr. Chairman, next question. Did you remember how to spell your name with that thing?
Yeah, I did. They were saving ink. They used one letter at the end instead of two.
Thank you. Our next item for action is a proposal received for roof replacement at the county complex building. We informally submitted, informally requested proposal. We informally submitted, uh, informally requested proposals from companies to replace the roof at the complex. We've had some issue with leaks through the years. We've really patched it very well. I know that when we got our first two, um, proposals, I thought that this was going to be something that we were going to have to push down the road. Um, we became aware of Coastal Building Solutions from Winterville. They provided a quote to replace the roof with, uh, and, and offer two-year workmanship and fifteen-year product, uh, warranty at a cost, um, that was half of what others had provided. So kind of jump back on the radar. This may be something we want to do suited and later. If you are comfortable with this, uh, amount of money being spent for a roof, which has been there for, I think it was replaced in, does ninety-four sound right?
I think so.
I think, uh, it's, it's on its thirty-year, and it's, it's had some issue lately. But, um, are there questions?
Is that the general rule, fifteen years, no?
For the product.
For the product. Did it have any that's got a bit of life sign?
No. Now, this is going to be a little bit different than what's currently on there. This is going to look more like what is on the Health Department. The Health Department has that white roof. There will be no rock. Rock's a thing of the past. But the, uh, what's on there now is a black roof, and it's just a different surface. This will be a white roof. So it should actually help us with, um, reflection of, you know, heat and stuff, too. But it is a, a different, um, has a good warranty. Um, and the contractor, uh, Coastal Building, is, I think that the, the preferred roofing contractor for Pitt County schools.
Could it have to be any removal of old things on roof?
So they're going to take it down to the metal, and then they're going to put the insulation and the rubber back on top. They're also going to repair, I'm sorry, they're going to install drains that fit what we currently have there. If, if you've never been up there, there are eight drains around those skylights. And if there's more than just the installation of the new drain assembly, if there needs to be any work done, now that'll come out of our pocket. But from what I know, our eight drains are proper, properly functioning. It's the new assemblies that will, that they will be in charge of installing. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The only comment I've got to make is that we've spent an awful lot of dollars to renovate and upfit our facility. And we know that we have issues. We know we've had leaks. We know we've had problems. It's time to do something.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept the proposal for roof replacement for the county administrative building.
Have a motion to approve. You'll have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor of the motion signify as ever saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Our next item for action is support of a resolution for the queue storage for West Green Elementary. I know it sounds odd, but queue storage is the route or path that, um, parents drop their students off at the school, also school buses. The idea is to try to improve traffic flow, um, at that school and keep it off of, uh, King Gold. It's a, there, there were many, uh, there were many proposals. I think there were seven total. And we're calling it six A, let's call it seven. But this is the seventh proposal that was reviewed and is now submitted to you for review. The funding for this is, I, I believe it was a million two fifty. DOT is willing to cover seven fifty, and we are working to gain the other five from our friends at the legislature, um, to avoid potentially a roundabout. Um, the roundabouts been, they, they work in some areas. We don't think it's, uh, the best fit for this area. Kind of been running my mouth on this. Are there questions?
Well, if it improves the traffic, I'm all for it. I move to approve the resolution as presented.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Where they come in and out right now? What would that be? What would they do there?
That would be abandoned, and it will be, it'll be blocked, yeah.
So all the buses and everything go in the same way?
I believe that everything is going to be shifted back towards Hall, um, not Hall Road, but, uh...
Shore, where's it shore?
Pine Shore.
Pine Shore driving.
It'll all be shifted back towards Pine Shore.
Stoplights going to be put up right there.
That's right. Thank you, Jerry. Sir.
Now, to get back in, in order for we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
May I, is there further discussion?
Well, you know, I'm thinking that what the goal is to help include the traffic situation.
Right.
And, uh, I know people, some people have some concern about it because they don't know how it's going to turn out. And it's quite normal for people for something to change out there come. So that we hope that, uh, they understand the intention of it is good and not bad. And if it is bad, then we'll fix and readjust it later on, but it's tall.
It'll take a while for people to get used to it. I think this is a better, better plan than a roundabout.
Any further discussion?
I want maybe one comment. I had a, talked to Trey yesterday about getting a color copy because I couldn't even see it. So I think we need to have the color copy in the future so we can understand it. And we had to email him on the weekends or something. I said, I'm looking at the, I was like, how they're coming out? And Trey can show me the color copy. And once I see the color copy, it made sense, you know?
We'll work on the color copy. Sorry, sorry, guys.
I will call up a question. Those in favor of the motion signify as ever saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Our next item for action is a proposed EMS salary adjustment. Since the pandemic, there have been some departments that have, um, we've just become uncompetitive. And even, even with the increases, even with the salary studies, and EMS is one of them. There's literature provided that details, um, where we are and how we're paying, which I think is, it looks great, but when you compare it to those around us, um, we are just, uh, we're a little bit behind. And we are trying to maintain a service level, um, consistent with the paramedic level that we have, we've attained. And I don't want to say that we're bleeding our employees, but we are, we're having trouble hiring some. We think that with this two-dollar-an-hour raise of their, uh, of their rate, that it will put us more in line with those around us. Um, they would still maintain eligibility for five percent because that's my goal in our budget process for a COLA, um, with CPI being where it's at. But I'll have you know that, you know, when you put the two dollars in and then the five percent in, the other information you have, the, the paramedics will get to twenty-one eighteen. And you can see that currently, Wilson, Nash, Lenore, Wayne, they're all at twenty-one or higher currently. When they put theirs in, we will, we'll be just a little bit behind still, but we'll be much closer. Um, I'm comfortable with the two. I was not comfortable with more. Are there questions? Oh, I also want to mention that I really hope this is the last time that something out of our ordinary process needs to be done for a singular department. Um, I don't especially like doing it, but we are, we're being reactive in this, and we are responding to our need to make sure that we can provide at that level for the, for the community.
Now, I can discuss what you just talked about. You know, there's several, a few of decades. If you look at the website, you know, it's been, decades have been over a while. So we need to try to make sure that we care to our department. So I appreciate that comment.
Thanks.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify as ever saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Our next item for action is review. I, I know that, um, I made a mistake and put motion to approve resolution. Uh, there was a, another version that went on top of this. I got the wrong version out to you. I forgive me. But, um, I would just like a review of this proposed incentive and performance bonus policy today. Um, I would hope to receive in, input from you all for the next two weeks till our next meeting, seventeenth. I want to make sure that everyone's comfortable. I want to make sure that everyone knows, everyone's very aware, so that we can come up with the best policy for us. But what it really is, is a tool for incentivizing grant writing, okay? Um, if you know, uh, our engineers do this at times, and they are allowed to charge us a grant writing fee of nine point nine 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 nine, et cetera. For other grants we've received, we have, uh, been charged a flat rate, and some can charge upwards of fifteen and twenty percent. This is an award of one point nine percent to a grant writer if received in the county. It doesn't, you know, necessarily count for the recurring grants that departments receive, but it counts more so for, um, like, capital grants or grants that bring in different or new monies one time for improvement. I know it's a, it's a different concept, and it's, uh, it's, it's really catching on in local government. I'm not asking for a motion today. I just, I'm proposing it. Um, and we've kind of talked about it in the past. And we tried to reduce the writing, the parameters needed for this to be successful. So let's get together, uh, and let's talk about this and see if we can't find something we're all comfortable with and get it approved for our grant writers in the county's benefit. Ray? Do you have a question?
I'd just like to look over it and...
Absolutely.
You know, we talked about this, and so I just want to make sure everything is where it should be. Because like I told y'all, I don't have a problem paying anybody one point nine six to get county money.
That's right.
And I would like to see it voted on at the next meeting if we do.
That's the intent of my timeline.
Give everybody time to look over.
Give us, give us...
Just, just going to make sure that when you're talking about it, and any input that you would like to give is received.
You know, I appreciate you adding this because this is one of my biggest issues I have.
Yeah.
Don't, I don't have no problem with this proposal, but it's very vague. It needs to be, it needs to be more concise and be very strict. Because it seems like there's two things going on, and that's sensitive and the grant writing bonus. Maybe kind of, maybe kind of go back and reword it, ensure that it's very clear.
Well, we welcome your input into making this as...
I have a problem with that. It's just too vague.
We'll just take a look at it and write down what you think.
Yeah.
And let's talk about it before next meeting, and let's get it voted on this time next meeting.
If that meets your timeline, it's what my timeline was intended to be.
And, you know, the main thing is getting people to understand, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. We're not doing anything to try to make nobody rich. And I wish that there were more things could be done for people to earn the money that they did, uh, do earn. Because there's so many jobs people occupy. If they got paid on what they were doing, they'd get very little money. I'm, I'm, it's because see, people go to work, but you get paid for doing nothing all day. A lot, you know, if they choose to.
It, it's like one of the bullet points, sir. It's another tool to incentivize performance, so.
And it helps the county, too.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's the main thing. It helps the county get money. If they can ride it, we do it tremendously.
And other people coming in, they kind of, like you can't say a person come here. And how, how does that fit in for somebody that's not an employee or having any connection with the county?
Well, generally, if there's a grant writer, they will charge a fee based on a, a percentage of grant received or a flat rate for application. But generally, I have, uh, in the past, I've had the board of commissioners. Uh, if I remember right, it was the Part F grant.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Judy Hills. She was, uh, part of the East Carolina Council's government, a former executive director. And she was able to write a grant that you all agreed to beforehand for a cost to receive five hundred thousand dollars from the state of North Carolina, the Part F Parks and Recreation Trust Fund.
Yes.
To help us in the construction of the wellness center.
And part of that, we had two grants, Part F grants as well for the Green County Recreation Complex.
So, I mean, that's still out there. There, there is a, a fee charged, um, whether it's internal, which is what we're proposing, or external, um, from a grant writer, an engineer, et cetera, for the effort they give in receiving. It now has to be awarded a grant.
Yeah.
But anyways, that's, I, I welcome your input. I look forward to working with you so we can make the best policy for Green County. Thank you. My last item for business today is a budget amendment for the senior center. There's an increase in fund balance appropriated of nineteen hundred dollars. Um, it had to do with reallocation of funds from DSS to the senior center. Uh, because it hit the fund balance, I increased it. I thought best to include it in the manager's section. Are there questions? Thank you.
What's the rule?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify as ever saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I will say also that the financial statement or a financial summary for the county was included. Please review that. If there are questions, please ask. We have a new financial leadership, uh, Ms. Lofton, and, uh, she thought it was imperative to get this out for your review. So I'm very, very pleased that you have that for your review. Like I said, if there are questions, please feel free to ask.
Madam County Attorney?
No comment.
No comments at this time. Commissioner reports and recommendations.
So I guess that's my part. I want to begin by state time incredibly proud. I am like Karen in the way we have come together to support each other. In the way we came together to honor and remember Tracy Sill. I completely equal Scott project to the way that support was given to Donna Robertson and Mrs. Higginson. Green County has shown time after time again that we are counting that care. I believe this is part of our spirit of unity and compassion that's just a part of what makes our county special. However, after reading the agenda this weekend, I anticipated that concern of mine. And that's regarding the audit. As county commissioner, I must ensure that all decisions are made in the best interest of the public. My decision to oppose the audit was not due to any personal agenda or bias, whether it's based on the fact that I have, that we have not had the opportunity to review the audit report. Normally, the report is given to us in advance so that we can be well prepared before the auditor makes their presentation and so that we can ask informed questions. I believe that this is essential that we have a chance to structure our audit report, understand the files and recommendations, and ensure that the audit is conducted fairly and accurately. I strongly believe this is the fundamental right of the county. We must exercise this right to maintain transparency and accountability. We must prioritize having enough time to review a certain document before making a decision. For instance, we have not postponed approving the county manager's contract. We would have approved it without fully reviewing it. This is unacceptable. As county commissioner, we must make informed decisions that serve the best interests of our country. Russian into justice without proper consideration and understanding all relevant aspects lead to costly mistakes and undesirable outcomes. Furthermore, it is appropriate that we avoid relying solely on public communication instead of prioritizing reviewing relevant documentation. We have encountered instances in the, in the past where misleading information was presented to the board, resulting in unfavorable outcomes. By taking the time to thoroughly structure our relevant documents, obtain necessary, uh, necessary information, we can better assure that our decisions serve the best interests of our county and future.
Thank you. Any other commissioner reports or recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, uh, April the eleventh, the Coastal Plain livestock shows in Kinston. Uh, if you want to see a lot of young people go there and show their pigs and livestock, it's a good event to go to. Encourage everybody if they can.
I believe we have sixteen. It's from Green County, just saying.
Sixteen.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Oh, six.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Thank you, Justin.
I got some bad. Um, I want to feel aware of it, but Trey and I met with the school system about two weeks ago. And one of the things they were concerned about is, you know, community not being informed, uh, what's going on. So one of the things Trey and I were working with now, I have a calendar event, and Trey has agreed to start pushing it to the county, so unless you're not checking that through. And I, I want to admit, I missed some things, so I made mistakes at times. And I want to admit, I missed some things, so I made mistakes a ton. I try to do the best I can.
We won't cut your pay.
We all try to do the best we can.
That's exactly right.
Will you go into closed session, Mr. Chairman?
Have a motion to go into closed session, we'll have a second. Have a motion and a second to go into closed session, any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify something saying aye. Opposed, none, the ayes have, the motion is carried, we're going to closed session. We're back in regular session.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adjourn and further discussion. Here and then, those in favor of adjournment signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have been motioned, carried.